Okay. At this time, I'd like to call to the order the regular trustee meeting at for June 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Asher.
Here.
Swedek.
Augustine.
Here. We'll go ahead and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular trustee minutes for May 17th, 2022, May 18th, 2022. Nope. Got that wrong. So a regular meeting for May 17th, 2022, and three special trustee meetings for May 18th, 2022, May 24th, 2022, and May 10th, 2022.
Second.
Second invite, Astral. All in favor, say aye.
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 I didn't know we had that many special meetings.
There were work sessions.
Yeah. All right. And we are going to give the floor to Mr. Bahari from the Service Department.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Um.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. We did a roll call.
We did. We did. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry, Mike.
I only have one thing for the meeting tonight. It's request for appropriations to purchase safety items at a cost of $533.85 and apply for reimbursement through the MOR grant opportunity. That's up to $500. So if we get the total $500, you know, it'd be $33.85 out of our fund. These items, did you guys get a chance to look over them? Any questions on anything that you had? It's two new safety harnesses for the bucket truck, shock-absorbing lanyards, safety glasses. Oh, what else was on there? Some sunscreen toilets. And there's a new anchor point for the bucket truck for the guys to tie off. So pretty much all safety PPE items.
Good.
Can you state it as, is it okay to just say so moved for that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so moved.
Uh, second. I'm sorry. Okay, Asher. Asher? Yes. Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine? Yes.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Um, that's all I have. If anybody hasn't drove Bellis yet where they redid it, it looks great. Take a drive. That hot mix turned out awesome. Melway did a great job. So they're pretty much complete. They got a couple of little things to finish up. Other than that, um, they'll be chipped soon later on a couple of the other. So I just don't know timeframe on that quite yet. So once they get some other work up in the area that they got, once they get the crews in is when they'll be in. So that's about it.
It looks very pretty.
You did a good job.
But I drove past, I was on Stony Hill, and I'm like, oh, I gotta drive on the road.
It's smooth. They did a good job.
And it doesn't get much more small town than that, right? Oh, I gotta drive on the road. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Do you need to stay for the motion for Valley Brook? Or are you good?
I think I'm all right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll be good.
Right.
We just got a lot of energy now, so.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bethany, I'll have you speak since you are our guest for being here today. We have Bethany from Medina County Economic Development.
Okay, if I can stand here?
Yeah. We've got a, we've got a, yeah, just because there's a mic there for the virtual audience.
Be safe.
Okay. I'll try not to create a feedback or. So thank you for having me this evening. I'm Bethany Detler. I'm the Executive Director of Medina County Economic Development Corporation, and I also serve as the Housing Officer for the Hinckley Township Community Reinvestment Area. It's been a while since we had a negotiated project in a, this is a post-1994 CRA zone, and they do require a company which has a prospective project to apply for and be approved for a tax abatement before they break ground if they want a tax abatement for their project. So we were approached by Isomer Group, which is the real estate arm of Discount Drug Mart, which is proposing to purchase four parcels at the intersection of West 130th and Center Road for the purpose of constructing a new Discount Drug Mart retail building. So this would be a wholly owner-occupied facility. The company has done several other projects in Medina County in townships that do have tax abatements, and so they, you know, they understand the process of working with townships. In this particular case, you know, the company tries to decide where they're going to invest their dollars and which new stores they're going to build and which order. They do try to build around one or two new stores a year. So in, in looking at this particular parcel, what they've indicated is that, you know, they would like to, they're in the due diligence phase, and they're looking to see if the township is willing to offer a tax abatement program as well as to make sure that all of the zoning would be in order before they finalize their project. The project consists of a total investment, capital investment of $7.2 million. That includes real property investment of $3.5 million. They would create 33 new full-time equivalent permanent jobs. And I would say that for the other stores in Medina County where they have committed to creating jobs, they've exceeded those numbers every time. Their, their stores in Medina County have done very, very well in the top 10 of all of their stores in Ohio. So I think, I think they believe this could be a great opportunity for them as well. So it's a company that typically underpromises and overdelivers. But they do, along with those 33 jobs, are looking at $1.1 million in new payroll. So what they have requested is a 50% tax abatement for 15 years, and we received the application and provided due notice to the Brunswick City School System. We pulled together a meeting which consisted of a representative of the township, county commissioner, we had the auditor's office represented, as well as the school system. One of the things that the county commissioners like to see that goes along with a tax abatement is a compensation agreement. So knowing that the entity which, I guess, has the, the most potential in foregone taxes is the local school system, the commissioners have asked that the company have, create some sort of a donation back to the school system for each year that they're benefiting from a tax abatement. In this case, the Brunswick City Schools have, they've agreed to accept, and they find acceptable, a $3,000 a year payment for each year of the abatement. So you, you have before you tonight two agreements. One of them is called the CRA Agreement, which outlines the terms and conditions of the tax abatement, and the accompanying agreement is the CRA Compensation Agreement, both of which would need to be approved by both the township and then the county commissioners before the company would be able to break ground or take advantage of, of the program. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any at this time. Just a comment that I do like that they're a local company and, you know, in consideration of what we would like to see on that corner. Currently, there is no income, so to speak, for the township there, where at least we'd be getting half of the taxes that are being paid. So 100% of zero is, is nothing, so half of something is better than that.
I do have some information that I'll, that I'll pass out to you in a moment, but thinking about, thinking about what, what is in it for the township in order to approve the abatement, obviously, bringing on a brand-new facility that is going to have a lot of, bring a lot of amenities to the community, I think is obviously very important. But also, as you mentioned, the new tax revenue. I did a comparison of the existing taxes that are collected by the township on the current facility. Obviously, this is, this is the building only because taxes on land are never abated, so it's just on the building. Currently, the township is collecting $612 a year on that, that facility. With the new $3.5 million investment, and in talking with the auditor's office, they always, they've made it a practice to value a new building at the, at the amount of investment in construction. So 3.5 million, if that's what they construct, that's usually what the auditor would value it at, so we use that as a proxy. When we, when we look at what the projected real property taxes would be on a $3.5 million investment with a 50% CRA, the difference between what the township would collect is fairly considerable, almost $3,000 a year more than what you're collecting now. So that is, I would think that would be a benefit, a net gain to the, to the township.
3,000 more?
Yes, let me.
It would be like 3,600?
Yeah.
Approximately.
For your file.
Thank you.
Now, Bethany, my understanding is that retail is not, is not viable for CRAs. Is there any truth to that?
It really all depends on how the, the CRA was set up in the first place. That, that's not true. The state, the state allows a community-wide latitude when it comes to offering CRAs. I probably have this back in my file, which is the, the terms and conditions of the, that the township put together, and it's got it back in my file, but I would, I don't believe that's, that's an issue for the township, but I can, if you want me to check, I'll.
Yeah, just because it was something that I had kind of investigated today in preparation, and I would, we could just have an answer, that would certainly help my decision.
So I am looking for, in my files, it's a one-page document that has the, the terms and conditions of the Hinckley Township CRA. I should have had that right at my fingertips.
No, no.
Wasn't that on the documents you had sent the trustees previously?
It probably was. Yeah, I think I'm grabbing that right now.
I don't remember seeing that.
Okay, so this is what, this is what the Hinckley Township program allows. So this project is brand-new construction. It will be considered in Division C on the tax exemption schedule for the Medina County CRA Area Number Five. What the township allows is an exemption of up to 15 years for construction of new commercial or retail, I'm sorry, of new commercial or industrial properties to be negotiated on a case-by-case basis in advance of commencement, commencement of construction. A percentage not to exceed 50% of the assessed valuation of such property may be exempted. So I'm assuming that the township would interpret a retail establishment as a commercial building. I guess, I mean, I usually would consider a retail building as a commercial establishment as opposed to a residential establishment, but I guess that would be, you know, your interpretation.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Did you, Bethany, did you say that there would be two resolutions tonight for this?
Yes. The, the, the resolution refers to two agreements. One resolution, but two agreements are covered in the, in that one resolution.
Oh, okay. So this is it.
Yes, the, the resolution would be to support a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement and a Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement.
Okay. Trustee Asher, do you want to make the resolution now while Bethany's here? Or do you want to wait till later when it's your, under your?
We can do it now. Do we want to talk about it?
Certainly.
Um, I think, I, I echo Jack's feelings. I think Drug Mart is a great company. I worked a lot with Drug Mart with my previous employer, and I love the fact that they're a local company. It's a smaller, you know, family-owned, well, now employee-owned company, so I, I like that a lot about them. My feelings on the tax abatement are, I, I feel that it, it is a good tool to get investment from companies coming in and entice them. I feel, my opinion only on it, is it's meant more for smaller. It's to entice the smaller, like mom-and-pop companies instead of the bigger companies like that that have so many different locations.
I agree with you. I'll be ready for the resolution.
Get ready.
This is the short one.
This is the short one.
Um, I would like to make a resolution of Hinckley Township Medina County, Ohio, authorizing the township to support a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement and Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement with Isomer Group Incorporated. Whereas, the Medina County Board of Commissioners has previously authorized designation of Community Reinvestment Area Number Five within the Hinckley Township for the encouragement of development of real property and the acquisition of personal property located in the Community Reinvestment Area by Resolution Number 95-631, and whereas Isomer Group Incorporated is desirous of constructing an expansion to manufacturing building to be located within said Community Reinvestment Area. Whereas, the Hinckley Township Board of Trustees is desirous of providing Isomer Group Incorporated with set incentives available for development of a project in Hinckley Township Community Reinvestment Area Number Five pursuant to Section 3735 of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the Hinckley Township Board of Trustees is also desirous of supporting a resolution of the Medina County Board of Commissioners to enter into a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement and a Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement with Isomer Group Incorporated to accomplish these goals. Now thereof, be it ordained by the Hinckley Township Board of Trustees, Medina County, Ohio, that the Board of Trustees supports the Medina County Board of Commissioners to enter into a Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with Isomer Group Incorporated pursuant to the terms set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part of hereof. The Board of Trustees supports the Medina County Board of Commissioners to enter into a Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement with Isomer Group Incorporated, as approved by the Brunswick City School District pursuant to the terms set forth in Exhibit B attached hereto and made part hereof.
Can we still discuss at this point before we vote?
You second it.
Yeah, second it, and then you can discuss.
Second number, Swedek.
I guess, one of my concerns here is possible annexation of that property by Brunswick. And if we have a company that's desirable, that has a proven track record, we bought, that area has been designated for business, you've got, you know, manufacturing on the north side of that as well, so it's pretty much contiguous, that would be my concern, is that we get something in there that, that is not good for the community, you know, brings no benefit to us and, or the loss of that through annexations. So that's, those are the comments that I just wanted to make before we vote.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Trustee Asher?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Okay, Asher?
Uh, no. You, you don't support the, the CRA?
I do not support.
All right. Swedek?
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm just checking. Just making sure. Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
No.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bethany.
We appreciate your time and efforts. Chief Setner, thank you for your patience.
Request approval to contract with cutting-edge decorative concrete to refinish and repair the police department garage bay area in Sallyport at a total cost of $19,585. If you recall, we discussed this in a work session a couple of weeks ago.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yeah, yes. Sorry, I was checking something else off.
Thanks, Bethany.
Very good. Anything else, Chief?
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you, are you gonna stay?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. Chief Rossova?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, request appropriations for $10,563.82 through Motorola Solutions for two radios, 12 batteries, three radio cases, four vehicle chargers, and two speakers, and $2,366 through B&amp;C Communication for a control head, speaker, microphones, remote cables, and labor at a total cost of $12,929.82. $12,827.66 will be funded through the Marx Radio Grant, and $102.16 will be funded through the Fire Department Fund Line.
Sum it.
Second.
Will you provide me that?
Yes.
Paperwork? Thank you. Uh, Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Request appropriations of $100 for Wayne County Regional Training Facility for, for training for Anthony McCarrick.
Sum it.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Request to move firefighter/paramedic Daytona Stigglemeier from 1435 an hour to her full pay of $18 per hour based on the organizational minutes effective immediately.
Sum it.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
I do have one item. The next blood drive will be June 18th at the current fire station due to the old fire station not having air conditioning during the summer months. We have that hosted in our training room at the old, our, our fire station now.
June 18th, and the link is on your website?
The link is through the Red Cross.
Red Cross.
Yep.
Can't get as many people in there now, huh?
No, we can't unfortunately, but we did have one of our largest ever last time, so.
Very good.
Chief Setner was there.
I was gonna say, was it Jack or Chief Setner that said they did it last time?
He did.
The chief.
Very good. Anything else for Chief? Nope. And you're gonna stay too?
I'm gonna stay till, yep.
Very good.
Trustee Asher?
Um, I'm gonna move right into zoning then. We have a zoning report, another orderly report. I feel like we just did this one, so I'm not gonna go over unless you have any questions for me. The other side is a different topic. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. The updated, updated zoning fee schedule is here for you. The draft four and draft five show the differentiation between what it looks like. Number four shows everything that was taken out, and number five shows everything that was put back in. And just for the public's knowledge, what I did was I reached out to Montville Township, Sharon Township, and Brunswick Hills and had conversation with them and just basically compared our fee structure to theirs. Had several meetings with Tom Wilson, our zoning inspector, and Suzanne Peterlin that assisted me in streamlining this and making it more efficient. We created a key to determine that if Inspector Wilson went out for one visit, that was equivalent to $50, and if he went out for two, it was equivalent to $75. So the new fees will reflect that. We find, found that most of our fees did align with our neighboring communities, but some of the, our, some of ours were vastly below our own expenditures. Now, we're obviously not in the business of making money, but we need to cover our own expenses. So for instance, if you look at the MAP Amendment, we were charging $500, but our fees consisted of upwards of $700. So I just wanted to give it to you to peruse. We can have conversation at the next work session about it, but at least now you have it. Certainly, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to contact me and let me know. Very grateful to Suzanne and Tom Wilson, and even Chairman Fisher of the Zoning Commission who assisted us in kind of reviewing that.
No, thank you for providing both, so we can see the difference.
Yeah, it's just much more efficient, even just taking the word "commercial" out and putting in "business" so that it mimics our zoning resolution, just simple things. It hasn't been updated since 2018, so it was due. And I had given you both kind of a little bit of a heads up, and I forgot about it at the work session, the 25 River Road, that was, there was a court order that it was reported a nuisance, and the Medina County Health Department also considered a solid waste public health nuisance. Prosecutor's Office called me to follow up on it. Hinckley Township paid for a title search, and they wanted to see if we, as the trustees, would authorize the cleanup of the property. It would mean that we would front the money, basically, for that. I'd have to get a resolution from the prosecutor if you supported it, and then the fees would be assessed onto the property so that we would be reimbursed the funds with the next tax assessment that comes back to us. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I would like to know what the cost would be to make sure that.
It varies based on cleanup, removing cars, having a company come out and clean up all of the debris in the yard.
Would somebody provide an estimate or something like that?
I can look into it. But we, do you want to do that before we do the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, so look at the cost of that.
And they're still living there? It's not vacant?
Still living there. Okay. Yeah, and this has been ongoing since 2020.
I feel like Chris talked to us about this in December when we met with Tom, the Toms.
That's right.
Chris.
And then really quick, I wanted to give a Serenity Court update, so I'm gonna share my screen. When I was at the Planning Commission meeting last week, right at the end of the meeting, we were told that Serenity Court, which you might remember had gone through two processes. I put it up for you guys on the screen so you can see it. They initially had their entrance off of Don Prey down here off of Country Brook, and then they changed it to come off Center Road right here. ODOT has not approved this. They said they would not allow it. And I think because they had already had approval to come off of Don Prey down here, so just for the public's knowledge, it has not been approved by ODOT. I, I can, you know, guesstimate why, but there was no reason why. Also, wanted to give a quick recap on the MAP Amendment for those in the audience who were not with us that night. The motion to make it a business did not pass, and so therefore, the property is still residential. And if you guys have any questions about that, feel free to call, email, and we will be happy to discuss it further. And that's all I have for zoning. How about you for cemeteries, Trustee Swedek?
For cemetery, we have a D design. We have, well, we were, here is that.
We have two witnesses from the audience, please. This one is for Noonan's?
Noonan.
Yeah.
Are you sleeping? Back there, Carl, you're always up here signing.
I'm gonna give back some of the, thank you.
Bless her.
Mr.? There's always a good one, too. Do you need a pen?
There's one.
Thank you.
And also, we looked at monument leveling, and I asked, excuse me, I had to go back and see if there was a cost benefit to doing additional ones, which there was. So now we've decided to go raise it up and list 20 monuments to get that price break. So this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into a contract with Pinnacle Monument Leveling and Restoration LLC for the leveling of 20 monuments in the township cemeteries at the cost of $200 each at a total amount of $4,000, with $1,000 being paid from the State of Ohio Cemetery Grant, and the remaining amount of $3,000 being paid from the Cemetery Improvements account.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
That is it for cemeteries.
Very good. Trustee Astral, the floor is yours.
Okay. So I know I have the fire resolution, it says next meeting on the agenda, but I just got them from the prosecutor's office this afternoon, late this afternoon, so we couldn't update the agenda. I wanted to ensure that the board was okay with me making the resolution for the renewable.
Hi, I'm Fine Levy, and the new one mill levy.
Now, I had a quick question, because I was looking at it after you emailed it, so thank you for doing that, so we could look at it before the meeting. Are they both five-year?
Yes. They're both five-year.
Did we have discussion on that?
Um, we had discussion. I know you were in favor of the permanent levy that you had mentioned. I guess Jack and I did not weigh in on that. I guess Jack and I did not weigh in on that. I would like to see it not be a permanent levy, especially with all of the new construction that's happening right now. We know that we have a couple new developments coming in, so I just think, I think it's short-sighted to go into a permanent levy right now knowing that we're gonna have a lot of new constructions in the next three or four years. That's already on the books.
Okay. I think that reason that I wanted to do one renewable five-year, which is the one that we have now, and the one permanent was to give the citizens an opportunity to determine if they wanted to support one or the other or both.
We have to do both to operate the department with three men. Irregardless if it's a five-year or a permanent, both levies need to be approved.
They're both renewable levies, both of them.
Correct. Well, I mean, even if it were a permanent levy, both, it's not an either/or, it's a both.
To get this.
To operate the three-man staffing.
Right, because we've established that we cannot do that under the one, one mil that we currently have that's renewing.
Correct. So you have a renewal,
Right.
which is approximately 350 additional revenue. And then whether it's a permanent or a five-year, then additional one mil needs to be approved, which would be roughly 370, around there, 20,000 more based on current valuation to fiscally manage a three-man 24/7. It doesn't matter if it's a permanent or a five-year. It's not an either/or, it's a...
Well, now we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna have two five-mil or two five-year renewable levies coming up at the exact same time in five years.
But if the additional one is put on, then they both become renewals.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You're gonna potentially have two renewable levies in five years.
Correct.
And what if one of them doesn't pass? And then you have to get rid of your three-man staffing that you've been accustomed to for the last five years?
The same thing happens now if one doesn't pass.
Agreed, but we've got a police department that runs off of three permanent levies, and we only have two permanent levies for our fire department. I just think that I would hate to have another board of trustees say, "Why did they ever do this? Now we've gotta do these two and maybe add on another one in five years' time."
The renewals allow a board of trustees to do a renewal with an addition. There's a number of options.
I know that one. Because I did it in 2017 with the first five-year renewable. So I'm very much aware. But I'm just saying that if we have, then we might have to add a third one in five years' time.
No, what I'm saying is if there's additional revenue needed, you could go to a, you could add another mil to one of the renewals. You can add a mil and a half to one of the renewals, and then you could terminate one of the other ones. There's, I mean, there's a whole mix of options to determining what levy. You guys had the option this year of adding a one mil onto the renewal. I mean, you had all those different options to do that, and those continue on irregardless of what your choice is.
I just was surprised to see it read five-year when we had no conversation about a five-year.
Well, I think we did have someone that we asked.
Martha had said that she had supported a five-year, but we did not have conversation about a five-year.
I, from my perspective, I feel that's what we've been saying all along, is the five-year, because Jess and I talked about it several times, and it was, we didn't want to combine. We didn't want to do a renewal plus because if it didn't pass, then we were in trouble.
Right.
We need this renewal to pass. So I felt we had discussed that, and maybe it was just implied and not openly discussed, but that's where I was at. I thought everybody was, I know you expressed at the last meeting that you wanted to do a permanent, a permanent in addition to the five-year renewal. I just, I feel, my opinion is, this is the better way to go for us.
Well, I don't agree, but I would like to see our fire department support it any way it can. And I, that's why I stated it at the last meeting, but I would like to see it be a permanent levy for them. Like I said, I just worry about what future boards will have to deal with if one of these levies doesn't pass in five years' time. Are we ready?
Well, I don't think it's any different than we are right now. Either they're going to support it and they want it, or they won't.
It puts us at a very big disadvantage to support a three-man staffing and then potentially have to take it away if another levy doesn't pass in five years' time.
I think that with the variables that we're dealing with right now, the fact that we know there's gonna be new construction, on top of the fact that, you know, I just left my house this morning in my pajamas to get gas because I was told it was 4:72 in the center of town, and it was already 5:09 in Brunswick. I never thought I would be leaving my house to go fill up all my gas cans at 4:72. I think that this is going to continue to happen. I think the inflation is gonna continue to happen, and I think people know that. So I think that that would make people more permanent. So this is gonna be forever versus, you know what? Let's do this for five years and see where we're at. That is my thoughts on it. Knowing that in five years, we can come back and get even more.
But it's not so much more. I mean, I just think it's a big risk in five years' time. And I think that everything you just said actually supports potentially doing a permanent because then we don't have to worry about it. If gas prices go up and our vehicles are the cost more or we have more staffing needs because we have more developments going in, those are our rationale to do a permanent and not have to worry about what the future holds and support our department. So I think it goes both ways. I absolutely agree with you.
And I think that's just our perspective on it. Because I look at it as permanent as, oh my God, like this is part... I would just be more weary of signing, you know, voting for something right now that is permanent, knowing, you know, what we're going into, you know, where we're already at and what we're moving into, so. That's just, I mean, I'm just one on this board of three.
No, I mean, I think we agree, but we just, we have different visions of it. And like I said, I would totally support it just so that I know that our staff in our town gets what they need out of the staffing of our fire department.
Are we ready for the resolution?
Drink your water. You've got two big ones.
Four hazels, both of them. All right. Martha, do I just start at the bold with the resolution or start at the top?
You can just start with a resolution declaring.
Okay. A resolution declaring it, let me get my pointer. A resolution declaring it necessary to levy a renewal tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites, therefore, or sources of water supply and materials, therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications for the payment of permanent, part-time or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service, administrative or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section 145.48 OR 742.34 of the Revised Code for the purchase of ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or for the payment of other related costs in Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio, and requesting the Medina County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of Hinckley Township and the dollar amount revenue that would be generated by that renewal levy pursuant to the sections and 5705.25 of the Revised Code. Whereas, this board finds the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount of necessary requirements of Hinckley Township and that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of that limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites, therefore, or sources of water supply and materials, therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications, for the payment of permanent, part-time or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical services, administrative or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section 145.48 OR 742.34 of the Revised Code for the purchase of ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or for payment of other related costs in Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio, as authorized under Section 5705.19i of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas, in accordance with Division B of Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, in order to submit the question of tax levy pursuant to Sections 5705.19i, 5705.191, and/or 5705.25 of the Revised Code, this board must request that the Medina County Auditor certify I, the total current tax valuation of the township, and II, the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the levy. And whereas, Division B of Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code requires this resolution to state the purpose of the tax, whether it is an additional levy or a renewal or a replacement of an existing tax or a renewal or replacement of an existing tax with an increase or decrease, the section of the Revised Code authorizing its submission to the electors, the term of years for the tax or if it is a tax for a continuing period of time, the territory upon which the tax is to be levied, the date of the election at which the question at which the question of the tax shall appear on the ballot, the territory to which the ballot measure shall be submitted, the tax year in which the tax will first be levied, and the calendar year in which the tax will first be collected. Each county in which the subdivision has territory and requesting such certification, the county auditor is to certify the total current tax valuation of the district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the proposed levy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio, that Section 1, this board declares that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitations by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of Hinckley Township and that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation. The board further declares the purpose of said tax levy is to provide and maintain fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites, therefore, of sources of water supply and materials. Therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications for the payment of permanent, part-time or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service, administrative or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section 145.48 OR 742.34 of the Revised Code for the purchase of the ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or for the payment of other related costs. The tax shall be a renewal levy of an existing tax at a rate of one mil for each $1 valuation, which amounts to 10 cents for each $100 valuation for five years, which levy is renewal of an existing levy of one mil. The submission of the question of said renewal levy is authorized by Sections 5705.03, 5705.19i, 5705.191, 5705.192, and/or 5705.25 of the Revised Code. The term of the tax shall be for five years, see Section 5705.19i. The territory where the tax is to be levied shall be the entire territory of Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio. The date of the election at which the question of the tax shall appear on the ballot is November 8, 2022. The territory where the ballot measure is to be submitted is the entire territory of Hinckley Township, Medina County, Ohio. The tax year in which the tax will first be levied is 2022, and the calendar year in which the tax will first be collected is 2023. The township has territory in Medina County and in no other county. Section 2, this board requests in accordance with Section and 5705.03B of the Revised Code that the Medina County Auditor certify to this board the following: A, the total current tax valuation of the township, and B, the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the renewal levy specified in Section 1. Section 3, pursuant to Sections 5705.03B, 1, the township fiscal officer is authorized and directed to deliver promptly to the Medina County Auditor a certified copy of this resolution. Section 4, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this board and of any of its committees concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this board or committees, and that all deliberations of this board and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and in full effect from immediately after its adoption.
Second.
Augustine's motion.
Astral?
Yes.
Swedek?
Augustine?
Yes.
I was gonna say, do you want one of us to do the second one?
Your choice.
With somebody, I mean, I can keep going, but if somebody is dying for some microphone sign?
Good to go?
Yes, sir.
A resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites, therefore, or sources of water supply and materials, therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications for the payment of permanent, part-time or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service, administrative or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section 145.48 OR 724, correction, 742.34 of the Revised Code for the purchase of the ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or for the payment of other related costs or for the payment of other related costs in Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, and requesting the Medina County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of Hinkley Township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that additional levy pursuant to sections 5705.03, 5705.19i, 5705.191, and 5705.25 of the Revised Code. Whereas this board finds that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient, insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of Hinkley Township, and that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of that limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment, or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites therefore, or sources of water supply and materials therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications, for the payment of permanent, part-time, or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service, administrative, or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under section 145.48 or 742.34 of the Revised Code, for the purchase of ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic, and other emergency medical services operated by a fire department, or the, or the payment of other related costs in Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, as authorized under section 5705.19i of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas in accordance with division B of section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, in order to submit the question of a tax levy pursuant to sections 5705.19i and 5705.191, and/or 5705.25 of the Revised Code, this board must request that the Medina County Auditor certify i) the total tax valuation of the township and ii) the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the levy, and whereas division B of section 505.03 of the Revised Code requires this resolution to state the purpose of the tax, whether it is an additional levy or renewal or replacement of an existing tax, or a renewal or replacement of an existing tax with an increase or decrease, the section of the Revised Code authorizing its submission to the electors, the terms, the term of years for the tax, or if it is a tax for a continuing period of time, the territory upon which the tax is to be levied, the date of the election at which the question of the tax shall appear on the ballot, the territory to which the ballot measure shall be submitted, the tax year in which the tax will first be levied, and the calendar in which the tax will first be collected. Each county in which the subdivision has territory and requesting such certification, the county auditor is to certify the total current tax valuation of the district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the proposed levy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, that section one, this board declares that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of Hinkley Township, and that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation. The board further declares, A) the purpose of said tax levy is to provide and maintain fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment, or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites therefore, or sources of water supply and materials therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications, for the payment of permanent, part-time, or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service, administrative, or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under section 145.48 or 742.34 of the Revised Code, for the purchase of ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department, or for the payment of other related costs. B) the tax shall be an additional tax levy at a rate of 1 mil for each dollar of valuation, which amounts to 10 cents for each $100 of valuation for five years. The submission of the question of said additional levy is authorized by sections 5705.03, 5705.19i, 5705.191, and 5705.192, and/or 5705.25 of the Revised Code. The term of the tax shall be for five years, see section 5705.19i. The territory where the tax is to be levied shall be in the entire territory of Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio. The date of the election at which the question of the tax shall appear on the ballot is November 8, 2022. G) the territory where the tech, where the ballot measure is to be submitted is the entire territory of Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio. H) the tax year in which the tax will first be levied is 2022, and the calendar and year in which the tax will first be collected is 2023. I) the township has territory in Medina County and in other, no other county. Section two, this board requests in accordance with section and 5705.03b of the Revised Code, that the Medina County Auditor certify to this board the following, A) the total tax, the total current tax valuation of the township, and B) the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the additional levy specified in section one. Section three, pursuant to section 5705.03b, I) the township fiscal officer is authorized and directed to deliver promptly to the Medina County Auditor a certified copy of this resolution. Section four, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this board and of any of its committee concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this board or committees, and that all deliberations of this board and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section five, this resolution shall be in force and effect from and immediately after its adoption.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Both did a great job. Does Martha fill that out?
I don't know.
I put it on, I put seconded by Emma Augustine, and then I just signed it, so.
Oh, you know what? I have to certify it. I did the same. I have the resolution number that.
So we're signing yours.
Yeah, why don't you, I'm just gonna send these down, so I keep them together.
Congrats to Asher, that's gotta feel good.
Thanks.
And now you have another resolution.
Yeah, I'm gonna send those down. And Monique, I will forward those to Kristen tomorrow.
Thank you. She is actually on vacation until tonight.
I will for, well, who's?
Well, still awake, thank you.
There's somebody that it says you can contact immediately.
Okay, just when you.
In her email.
Her reply?
Yeah, in her, in her reply.
Okay.
I have one more thing to discuss with you both, and that is, I'm not sure if you remember the conversation we had a couple of months ago about the networking group that is here every Thursday morning, using Town Hall, they're renting the, the room monthly for a discounted rate, and I was talking to Suzanne about it. We were talking about, instead of him coming in here every single month and, you know, doing the check for the month, and then doing the deposit for the month, and then having to reissue that deposit for him, they're fairly certain they're going to keep on going with this. So I was wondering if there were any thoughts or objections to, instead of him renting it monthly, moving it to a quarterly basis. So he would rent, he would provide a check for the three months, and then only provide one deposit check, and then we will reissue that deposit check back at the end of the quarter.
I think that's smart.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to amend the rental agreement from the organizational meeting for the monthly/weekly rentals. When renting township meeting rooms is an ongoing practice, the room may be rented quarterly with one refundable deposit check to be reimbursed at the end of each quarter.
Second. Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Martha, do you want me to send you this one? It's the one I emailed you.
Yeah, I'll just pull the one that.
I thought you were signing and you weren't.
Okay, and I'm done.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Please may I be excused?
Yes, sir, I apologize.
No, you don't want to stick around now?
No, I'd like to.
Does anyone from the audience have any questions for Chief Grisimba before he goes?
I'm good.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay.
Bye, chief.
Bye, thank you.
Sweattick? And I, Laura's yours.
So the county engineer's office is going to advertise the concrete work, and then they will handle obtaining the bids electronically. It's an automated process. It's what they do with all the concrete work. I thought that was probably best for them to do that. If you guys agree with that, I will go ahead and make the motion for that.
I agree with that. I'm good.
Are you guys are leaving too now?
I go to shore.
This has just begun.
Make a motion to adopt, do I read this resolution number, Martha?
It's 04, yeah.
Okay. Motion to adopt resolution 060722.04, which authorizes the Medina County Engineer's Office advertising the 2022 Hinkley Township concrete bid for TH357 Valley Brook Boulevard replacement project base bid, Willow Lane to Brook Hollow Oval, and TH357 Valley Brook Boulevard replacement project alternate bid, Brook Hollow Oval to Brook Haven Lane, in the Gazette on June 10, 2022. Details will also be available at hinkleytp.org. The bid opening shall be on June 27, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. at the Medina County Engineer's Office. The engineer's estimate for base bid is $450,729.50. The engineer's estimate for alternate bid is $409,228.
Second.
Sorry, I thought she was signing. I'm trying to take over a little bit so you guys can.
Somebody just tell me who, who won that second.
Augustine, second. Thank you.
All right. Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Very good.
So Martha wisely advised us that the next primary election is on August 2, which conflicts with a regular meeting. So we need to.
Is that everything?
Yes, ma'am, I was just checking.
Thank you.
Either move, move, or cancel.
I did see that email.
I don't, I mean.
I feel like that's kind of far in advance to just make a blanket, like, let's just cancel it.
Do you want to wait until the next one to decide?
What's the date? August?
August 2nd.
That's what I.
Yeah, because it's two months away. I mean.
Right.
We may all be on vacation.
That's true.
All right, we'll table that one. Website development project, the contract was executed, and I want to say on providing. So they have reached out to me, and I'll send you a little questionnaire that they're looking for an initial, an initial meeting already. I think we either pick a liaison so that we can keep the process moving, or otherwise we have to do them in the open with the.
Why not? I would say you'd be the, your guy.
Who's doing the website though?
Your guy, not the job.
It's your guy.
I got picked, but.
I mean, it could, it would, I could see how it would fall under administration. But it is your guy, so.
But, well.
I'm, I'm, I don't really have a strong feeling one way or another on it, so.
I'm just thinking that, I'm thinking that.
I would assume it would fall under administration. Do we want to have the liaison conversation now so we can determine who would be the liaison for the website?
Sure.
That's fine.
Does that sound like a fair ask? So at the last work session, we talked about moving me to administration and zoning, because they kind of go hand in hand. Former trustee Schulte and former trustee Kalina did both, and so that was, my recommendation was just to move me to administration and zoning.
I, I thought about it a lot, and I just, I, I don't think it's fair to ask me to give up the liaison after six months because you created a conflict within the police department. I don't think it's fair for me to have to give that up.
The statement that you just made is not founded.
Well, the union got involved and.
I'm doing the electronic newsletter. I'm doing the non-employee handbook. I have done all of the comprehensive plan surveys and mailing, and handled all of the surveys that were not received, and I'm still handling those. Most knowledgeable probably about the Zoom room, and actually have started a Procter job description. So if you don't want me to have administration, that's fine. Why don't I just take zoning? It's a huge department.
You would be taking, is that a lot for you?
So I'm taking the police. You want to take cemeteries too?
Sure.
Okay. Done?
I know you don't want cemeteries.
Not dead. Cemeteries isn't that tough. It's.
I've done cemeteries before, believe it or not. Perfect.
You're giving up the cemeteries.
Do we need to make a motion to amend the organizational meeting minutes?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so well, I'd like, at this time, to like, to make a motion to amend the organizational meeting minutes to reflect that trustee Sweattick will have the police and service department in addition to the other departments he has, and trustee Augustine will have zoning and cemetery in addition, well, no others, departments, just zoning and cemeteries. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Asher. Can I get a roll call, please?
Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
So my assumption on the website would be that trustee Asher would be the one to be the liaison. That would be my feeling.
Would you mind doing that?
No, not at all.
All right, now I will let, I'm gonna say her name is Renee, the different spelling on it, though. I'll forward to you what she said, and I'll send the questionnaire she sent to me, to you as well.
Okay.
And just comment on it. They're not looking for a whole lot back, but they're very anxious to get going and pretty excited about it, so I'd like to see it.
I'm excited about it.
Okay, I'll get that to you post haste.
Perfect.
The East Firewall Fire Station. So I reached out to them. Martha and I talked about a couple of things, breaking out the work to do just the structural portion. He said he won't recognize a lot of savings just by extracting drywall in the finished portion of it. I also talked about us taking the doors and reselling them, and the, when you have somebody doing that work, part of the contract is they, they own that. So he said if you want them to pull them down and save them for you, it's going to cost more than the doors are worth because of what they have to do to protect them while they're taking them down. So that's, unfortunately, the most cost efficient way is to just demo it. That's why you see that happening all the time when they do things. So his recommendation is to just revise the estimate and go out again for bid.
And now that you've got it down, you should be good to go. What is his estimate, the new estimate?
He has not.
Okay.
Been going in yet.
Okay.
That makes me so nervous. Every time we send it out, it comes back.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Fourth time, fourth time's a charm?
Probably not.
Very good. Well, thank you for your work on that. That was a question that came up during Memorial Day.
One last thing is, I know that we're looking at the bicentennial. I got some stuff from Granger, with, because they're working on theirs right now. So just, you know, guys, take a look at it.
Thank you.
It's something for consideration. They got a lot of nice stuff on here. Maybe we roll it into whatever we're doing here.
Look at you. I was just gonna go spy. You already have, like, papers.
They're doing a lot of nice stuff.
They're doing a lot.
So.
Keeps me in signs for a second.
That is all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. Comprehensive plan update. The surveys have gone out. I'm gonna throw my numbers at you. We had 3,319 surveys in total that went out. We received back, and meeting the deadline, 1,240, which is just roughly a little, little over 37%. We have here unopened 59 surveys that came in after the deadline. They were just postmarked after the deadline. So I wanted to get your opinions on those 59 people, if they should be included in the survey findings. And I know we talked about the deadline, but I just want to be sure because our staff here is very worried about not opening those envelopes at all, and kind of how to handle it.
Were they, so they were actually mailed in?
They were mailed in.
Are they postmarked before the deadline?
No, they're all after.
They're all after. Everything's after.
Okay. But I think 59 is significant.
I, I agree, 59 is significant.
I have to say no. There were ground rules, just like we said, you know, if it wasn't delivered to your house, we can't, you know, that's beyond our control. You know, if it wasn't delivered to your house, we can't, you know, that's beyond our control. This was within their control to get it to us in time.
Well, the post office got it to them in time, but I see your point. We just, we have said...
I'm saying that we, we, we discounted the request for copies for something out of our control. This was within the responders' control to get it to us in time.
Okay.
And they didn't. It is what it is.
I just want to do my due diligence and bring it to you guys. What do you think, trustee Asherle?
I think the same thing. I thought when we talked about it two weeks ago, we need to honor what we said we were going to do. We need to follow through and stand by with what we said.
Perfect.
Do you have an opinion?
Um, I, I didn't have an opinion either way. I think that they put the stamp on it. They filled it out. Their time was invested. But we did say that we had a deadline. It was the clearest day on that survey. We've talked about it before, but I wanted to give our staff members here the opportunity just to talk one more time about it. I thought the number was higher than I thought it would be coming in after the deadline. So it would just be clear.
Yeah, I had a couple of friends reach out to me and they're like, can I, I'm not going to get it there by noon. I'm like, it's noon. It's the deadline. Office is closed and locked at noon on Friday. It's noon.
It's noon. So that is behind us. Um, there were some people that had come back to us. I think there were roughly 15 that said they did not receive a survey. And when we looked at them, four of them, maybe it's five, were not on the mailing list at all. Do we offer them an opportunity? The people who were not on the mailing list?
I, I think at this point, it's too, I, it's too late. They're already analyzing all of the, um...
They don't even have it inputted yet. So I talked to Arthur just for this, this topic because I said, we may have a few strugglers. Would you be able to implement them into your process? And he said, it's no problem. They're not, they're halfway through.
When did they reach out?
All different times. And then what we did was we verified with the mailhouse if they were on the mailing list. Many of them were. They don't know.
Yeah, I, I saw Lynn share it. I have someone to share it with all of us.
Um, because I've been contacting each one of them and following up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did not follow up with the folks that were, well, I followed up with a couple of the folks that were not on the mailing list. I found out about one of them today. Um, and just told them that we would have conversation tonight and I would get back to them and let them know that they could have an opportunity to come in and fill one out.
Where was the mailing list generated?
Uh, it's, it's used by, it's the same mail hub and printer that we use for the Kimball. So a lot of these were just new builds.
And they reached out before the deadline?
Yes. We've been working on it for the last two weeks, determining who received one and who didn't.
I would say if they reached out before the deadline...
We have two of them that are in apartments.
That would be my opinion. If it was before the deadline, and it's verified that they were not on the mailing list. So an apartment wasn't on the mailing list, even if there was somebody else there before?
Because it was considered a business. Apartments are only allowed on second floors. So it's generally considered a business that the apartment is over. And so the business owners weren't incorporated because they aren't a part of the Kimball list. We only did residents.
Playing double advocate in my head right now. But I know, I had someone reach out to me, um, last week and said that they reached out twice. And I, that's how I got the list from Lynn. I said, can you send that list to me? And they were not on the mailer. I just, I agree. I would love to see those people get them. I just think that we are opening up Pandora's box for this to... Are we going to have a plethora of people saying, no, I didn't get it? Because you have other people on that list also saying, I never got it. And all we can do is say, well, you were on the mailer and it got mailed to you. We can't explain. I just, I worry. Are we going to solve one problem and create five more? That's, that's my concern with it. Um, I, I spoke to one of the people on that list, Luciana, and she said, oh, we really wanted to do it. And I apologized to her. I said, I don't know how you were missed. And I asked her, I said, do you normally get the Kimball mailer? And she said, I don't know if we get it or not, so...
Well, if they didn't get it and they weren't on the mailing list, we, I, it's my opinion that they should have a fair opportunity to fill out a survey.
If, if you're both in agreement with it, then that's fine. I, I will agree with it if you're both in agreement with it.
How many are we talking? Six?
Five.
I, I, I just see both sides to it, so I don't feel strongly one way or the other because I see both sides to it. So if you're both in agreement with that...
I mean, we could put parameters on it and say it's just these, these five people. I reach out to them. I notify them that they have to come in and they have to do it by this Friday. And they, they have to fill it out here during business hours, just so we can see them fill it out and have it over. I mean, it's just, we have to, I, it's my opinion. We have to do the right thing. It's not their fault they weren't on the mailing list.
What do you think? You were on the steering committee. What do you think?
It's something we didn't consider. We should have said there would have been a margin bearer.
Well, we did.
Oh, you did?
We did say that.
We talked this through at the beginning and said, there are going to be people who don't get it. It's going to happen.
And that's it?
And that's how it's going to be.
Well, if that's the case, then I'm, that's how it is. Okay.
That is what we said.
All right. That's fair enough. But if Liza was discussed and...
And it was, it was raised several times about what's going to happen to people who don't get it, whether by their own omission or by USPS error or whatever.
But this is our error.
That's, that was standing. He's saying for, for whatever reason.
For whatever reason, that there was many people who wouldn't be represented. But we didn't have a vehicle that assured that everyone would be. Right? I think at the time, we had said we're going to trust in the list. Now, in fairness, in fairness, that was based on, at the time, we thought we were going to merge the voter registration list and the Kimball list.
But you still had a discussion about...
We, we did, but I think that's a salient point, though, because we thought that the voter registration list would be, those two merged together would be nearly foolproof. But like these, you mentioned new bills, they weren't going to get caught either way.
Yeah.
While I respect the process and say that, I understand your positions about we should, you know, if people reached out and want to be included, I hate to discourage that community involvement. But I don't know if it's a fine line between the folks who had it postmarked late, right? I mean, uh, was that, was that a call to the USPS that was postmarked late? I don't know. None of us can say that for sure. They get stuck in an USPS box for three extra days. Oh, sorry, we didn't postmark it till today. We don't know the intent or the actual action of the people who did it. They're here now. I know you guys already talked about this and said we shouldn't include those 59. I don't know, but I agree with that, but that's, that's not my decision to make. So, so the direct answer is, I don't know.
Thank you, Tom.
Why don't you take the five out of the 59 that you're going to throw away? Give us those.
In, in, in light of your comments that it was a point that was considered...
We did.
Then I'm more inclined to agree with Monique that, you know, opening it up does create more problems than it solves.
So it's five out of, how many responses, um, respondents? Do we have 1,300, you said?
1,240.
Okay. Is that statistically significant? I don't think it would sway one way or the other.
Like I said, I, it's, it's our error. It's the, it's the mail hub's error, the printer's error. But I would just like to give them a fair shake since they weren't on the mailing. But if you guys are in agreement, we'll leave it as is. Are you in agreement?
I'm, I'm reluctantly in agreement, yeah. It's, I, I, I hate to say no, especially when we, this is just beyond what any of us expected for, for a response rate. So I hate to say no.
Can I ask a question then? So would, would your response be different to this question if the response rate was different?
It's a good question.
That's a fair question.
If we only got 30 back?
It's a fair question.
I think you would say, oh, we're, we're not going to include these five.
I don't think I would. It's, it's a fair question. I don't think I would because what I have been saying from the beginning, what I said two or three weeks ago when we discussed this before, before I even knew how many surveys were in, is I said, I think we need to do what we said we were going to do. When this first came up, I said, the deadline is noon. It is emboldened red on that survey. We need to stand by and do what we said we were going to do because we did discuss this at work session with people who were going to be on vacation, who weren't going to be able to get it here in time, people who, you know, were, they wanted another survey and they were saying, you know, we didn't get one. And I brought it up then. I said, well, but how do you know the wife didn't throw it out? Thinking it's junk mail and now the husband's looking for it, saying, well, where is that? I want that. So, um, to back, to back up...
She's not fessing up?
She's not fessing up. That would be me, by the way. I would throw it out. Get this junk out of here. So I, I did say that to kind of back up that, I, that was my stance all along. We need...
So your response rate isn't relative to...
Response rate isn't rela, I'm, I think it's awesome. I love that we have so much responses, but no, that would not, I would not change my opinion on it.
Okay, so we're in agreement that we will not be giving these, um, extra five people an opportunity. Very good. Um, the next steering committee meeting is next Tuesday here, 6:30. I spoke with Arthur at OHM. Because they've had so many, uh, surveys come in, they will not have our results until that night, um, which I think is fine. I'm, I'm geared up and ready for that. Um, at the last trustee work session, I had mentioned that there was a flyer that some citizens had said they received in their mailboxes and titled Hinkley Township Survey, and it looked like a township document. And I had said that, you know, we, as a township, don't stuff things in flyers or stuff things in mailboxes. We mail all of our documents. Um, that is a federal offense to stuff things in your mailbox. Um, the problem with the document is it appears that it questions five out of the 12 questions. It looks like it's trying to educate, but it's actually filled with misinformation. Um, and I shared it with our zoning commission chair to get his opinion on it. And he said, it's definitely misinformation. And so some people have asked if it has compromised the results of the survey. And so I would like to, um, get your opinions on if we should give that question to the steering committee and let them determine if the validity of those questions has been compromised secondary to the flyers that were stuffed in people's mailboxes kind of telling them how they should or shouldn't vote or giving misinformation about questions.
I would think that that's no different than all the political stuff I get mailed to my mailbox every single day, giving information, um, one side or the other. So I would not think that it would invalidate the survey results. I think, I think it's anyone's right to say what, what they want about, um, about the survey, about, you know, about us, about the trustees, about, you know, the police department, the fire department. I think it's anybody's right to do what they want. I mean, I agree stuffing mailboxes is not something, it's, it's a federal offense, but we're not the police, though. We're not here to take care of that, but I, I would think that it's not going to invalidate the survey results, in my opinion.
So the questions, number three was about conservation developments. And it specifically was stating that the people that live in conservation developments don't pay as much in property taxes, which there's not any type of documentation to back that up. Number four and number five said dwellings. Um, it was specific to dwellings and having, it has to be rentals in a B1 and a B2 area, which is not true. Um, the dwelling units are generally apartments, as we call them, in the B2 district and...
You're reading, you're reading what was on this flyer.
No, I, I already read what was on the flyer.
No, I'm saying, these, these comments you're saying are on the, on that flyer.
Well, they're, they're sent, yes.
Okay. So the, the flyer, just like anyone could send you an email, they send you a text, they can, they can mail it to you. Like Monique said, the, the fact that they stuffed a mailbox, that's not our concern. But it's, the residents' concern is filling that out, whether they hear comments from a neighbor or on that sheet to do their due diligence before they fill it out. Or could just enter their own opinion. It's not, you know, it, it's ju, it's just like elections, you know? Yeah, some, they're, they're stuffing my mailbox with that and trying to sway my opinion.
I, I think the difference is, is that our zoning resolution tells us what fact is. And maybe this, this wasn't given that way. It was not fact.
I understand that. Neither are the political postcards.
Well, I, I think that, it's my opinion that the steering committee should decide what should happen with these questions and the validity of them because they're the ones who've put in the last six months working on this process.
And have them say because someone spoke against it to throw it out? Is that what you're saying?
It's not that they spoke against it. It's that it, it, it kind of directs them as to how they should answer the question. And it, I think that it's something the steering committee should have a say in since they have been working on this process. They've been invested in it for the last six months. They created the questions.
Okay, but to what end? To say invalidate the survey?
To determine if they should be, yeah, if they should, if they have been compromised.
I, I disagree with that.
Okay.
I, I just, like I said, it's somebody trying to sway your opinion and it happens every single day.
I won't come up with some off-the-wall number, but I mean, I spoke with multiple, I spoke with my mother, for instance. My mother was filling out the survey and she called me and she said, okay, Monique, here I am. I'm on the website. And she was on our website looking things up. So I think that...
That's great. I love that.
I think that because there was so much discussion about this, um, this survey going out and people were so hyper-aware of it, I think that's why we got so many people saying, I didn't get it. Where's my survey? They wanted to do it. I think people saw the importance of it. They saw the value in it, that they, a lot of them were doing their work, going, trying to find the answers, reaching out to steering committee members, reaching out to trustees, reaching out to zoning members to say, what does this mean? So I would think, I, I would think, no, it, it should not invalidate the survey. Like you said, that's six months of the steering committee, um, members' lives. It's six months of our lives.
It's easier for me.
Um, longer for you and the previous board. It's, it's a lot of money that we've done in this. It's, you know, OHM's time, so no. I, I would not think that that would invalidate the surveys. I, frankly, any more than opening the surveys and making copies of the surveys. I don't think that invalidates them any more or any less. It's, it is what it is. I mean, I thought everything was going to OHM completely unopened, but people took the time, like you said, people took the time to fill out the survey, to bring it here or to mail it here because they wanted to see it count. I think that we need to just move forward in the course that we're on right now and continue to move forward.
That's fine. Okay. Um, trustee liaisonship, we already discussed that. Motion to amend the 21522 motion for citizen of the year not to exceed $390. Um, when I made the motion in two, on the 15th of, uh, February, it was for $375 and we spent $387.45. I brought that up at the last work session because we bought a brand-new plaque for the next citizen of the year, um, for next year, um, because this one's completely full and it was a little more than we thought it was going to be. So can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Uh, motion to approve Hinkley Garden Club's purchase for flowers in the amount not to exceed $110. They did the, um, beautiful planters up at Veterans Memorial Park for Memorial Day.
Didn't we just pay them?
No.
Second.
Maybe.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
We'll pay it when I make the motion to pay the bills. See how that works? Um...
Maybe you did then.
Motion to approve zoning inspector webinar through the OTA for Tom Wilson and Suzanne Peterlin in the amount of $40. They both expressed an interest in this OTA education.
Is it total 20 each?
Yes, ma'am.
Second. Ashrell?
Yes.
Swidek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. All right. And the community block grant, we did not meet, well, the deadline actually is, I believe, on Wednesday. But all of the monies that were available, they far exceeded, and the county commissioners met with the planning commission last week to determine who would get what. So we have missed that. Something to consider for next year. And hopefully, we would be at the top of the list for next year, because we haven't had it in a couple of years. Special thanks to all those that participated in the Memorial Day parade and celebration.
I just want to add in there, because I got a phone call from Ruth McCotty, that in the thanks that you would issue, I think in the newsletter, was it the newsletter that you did, that your thank you, Pastor Philcox was left out of it. So she wanted me to make sure we thanked Pastor Philcox.
Pastor Philcox. I'll have to look at that. Thank you.
Yes.
And he's been having his, his parish pray for us. So that's fantastic. I will make that change. Thank you.
They also sent out an email about the MAP amendment last week. So someone forwarded that to me.
The Hinkley Historical Society is opening up for regular business hours again, so first time since COVID. And I will have Suzanne post this outside of the office, so that anyone who's interested in attending can bop in when they are open. The Zoom will be ending here at the end of June, according to the governor's last notice, as far as participation. In the past, we've kept it going so people can still listen in. It's, it's very convenient for citizens to be able to just listen or watch virtually. Do you agree to continue that on?
Absolutely.
Very good. And Juneteenth will be 6/20. Last year, we made that a paid holiday. So the offices will be closed here on June 20. That is all I have.
So we get the day off?
Okay, yeah, you get paid, paid day off. Martha?
Okay, I just need a. I need a resolution which approves Hinkley Township's 2023 estimated budget. I provided you guys with the final earlier today, and we discussed it at the last work session.
We did.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ashrell?
Yes.
Swidek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And I have a request to increase, amend our credit card policy to increase Suzanne Peterlin, the administrative assistants' maximum credit card allowance from $500 to $1,000 per month. There's postage increases, and she's also got a number of, of bills, monthly bills, like the Zoom and the other things on her credit card that are pushing her to the max.
So moved.
Second.
Ashrell?
Yes.
Swidek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Current fund balance, this, right now, is $6,656,671.98, of which $1,655,570.95 is in pooled investments, and $5,591,101.3 is in primary checking.
Very good. Thank you, Martha. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $159,360.18.
Second.
Seconded by Ashrell?
Ashrell?
Yes.
Swidek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. And anyone from the audience, or anyone from the virtual audience that would like to speak, please come to the podium or raise your hand. We've got Nikki Long. Nikki, I'm asking you to unmute.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I just wanted to say, in regards to the, the information sheet that was sent out, just to clarify, for the benefit of all the residents that do live in conservation districts, the, the document actually does not say that those folks pay less in taxes. It just says that they are taxed, that their land value is taxed on their true parcel size, which oftentimes is less than two acres. I'm going to read the last sentence of that paragraph, which is, "Some say homes inside conservation districts have a total assessed value that is higher than traditional two-plus acre lots." So that would indicate that if their total assessed value is higher than traditional two-acre lots, that they actually would pay more in property taxes than some traditional two-acre lots. So again, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue. I just want, for the, again, for the benefit of those folks that live in conservation districts, I want to be clear about what that fact sheet actually said. And it did not say that conservation, that homes in conservation districts pay less than any other home in Hinkley that's not in a conservation district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else virtually that would like to raise their hand? Or anyone in the room who would like to come up to the podium? I wish, we should actually have your address memorized.
Anyway, Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I want to take you back to early January of this year at the zoning commission organizational meeting. There was a long, protracted discussion about potential conflict of interest. A lot of discussion, acrimonious discussion at times. But the point was, there was a big, long discussion, which ultimately resulted in the chair being replaced by another person. This evening, you mentioned conflict regarding some liaison activities and responsibilities that you have today. And I think that, that is well worth a public discussion about what the conflict is. Why are all the, why is, why is this, why are these changes being made? And, you know, it's just, it seems only fair that if the zoning commission is going to have a discussion that long and that deep, that you guys should have the same discussion as well. Unless it's proprietary, it's stuff that should go on an executive session, or what. But I know, I'm curious as to why that change was made. And right today, you didn't answer that question. And since the chief is here, do you have anything? Can you say anything, or?
I can't. Thank you, Mr. Larson. This situation has gone on far longer than it should have. Took up a lot of time and my energy. I have a brief statement to make to this, and that will be it for tonight for me. There were a series of complaints that were made by trustee Augustine against Patrolman Jim Ashrell. I based my investigation on the specific facts that were given to me. I found these complaints had no substance, documentation, or validity to support the allegations. Thus, the complaints were closed as unfounded. On May 18, the OPVA filed what amounts to a hostile work environment grievance against trustee Augustine, and I served on the board on May 20. As part of that grievance, the OPVA requested that trustee Augustine be removed as liaison for the police department. And that's where we are today.
So there's, so there's, there's no one named Ashrell that basically remains untouched. The zoning commissioner is remade, was removed fundamentally. I don't know what conflict was going on between trustee Augustine and him. Clearly, there's lots of acrimony going on between trustee Ashrell and trustee Augustine today. And now trustee Augustine is making complaints against Patrolman Ashrell? Is there any more, are there any more Ashrels in, in Hinkley government or anywhere else that has the potential to be picked on or pointed out by trustee Augustine? I mean, this is clearly a pattern, and it's not a good one. And I think you guys should be aware, that we're aware, that there's, there seems to be an appearance of unfairness here by one trustee. And I don't think it should continue. I think you guys, whatever disagreements you guys have, you should bury the hatchet now and move on down the road, since you now have different assignments. You know, that's all I have to say. But it, it just looks so bad.
Anyone else? All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting at 8:11 PM. Seconded by Ashrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.